On May 2nd, 2016, 5:30 PM with the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers, would you please join us for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank God for America. Roll call, please.
Davidson.
Here.
Fleming. McCambeau. Scott.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
The mayor is in Mississippi, is that correct?
Correct.
Picking up the number-one trophy from the Big Muddies competition. So, that'll be nice. First thing on the agenda tonight is a tenure award. And this is a certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of 30 years of service to the city of Burlington, dedicated service as of April 28th, 2016. Presented to John Mark Hirschbrenner for this certificate of recognition, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor, and a service pin of 30 years. So, congratulations.
Thirty years, it's hard to believe, but it was a good time. I've had some great people to work with and fantastic people to work for. I hope they keep me around for a couple more years to make a record out of this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for all your work, sir.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, we have two proclamations. The first one is the National Day of Prayer, and Councilwoman Wilson? No, I'm sorry, Councilman Scott, excuse me.
Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas in 1988 legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as National Day of Prayer was adopted, and whereas Congress has declared Thursday, May 5th, 2016 as the 65th consecutive observance of National Day of Prayer, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God in observance this day in Burlington, Iowa, when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2016, as a day of prayer in Burlington, Iowa, and urge citizens of Burlington, Iowa to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Signed and sealed the second day of May, 2016, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor, and Pastor Pratt is here to accept this.
National Day of Prayer this year is going to be held at the Oak Street Baptist Church, and it's going to start at 6:30 PM this coming Thursday night. And we pray for you people, our leaders.
Thank you.
We pray for our law officers, our firemen. We pray for our federal leaders, pray for our nation. And the beautiful thing about this is that this is going to go on in every state all across America. People will be raising up their voices and praying for God to bless. And so, we look forward to that. And so, you're welcome. We invite everyone to come and join us this coming Thursday night, 6:30 at the Oak Street Baptist Church.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
The next was the Historic Preservation Month now.
Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, enhancing districts and communities, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Burlington has an abundance of historic treasures, including national and local registered properties, and the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission promotes the preservation of historic landmarks and historic districts within the city of Burlington. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May, 2016, as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Burlington, and call upon the people of Burlington to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Signed and sealed, this second day of May, 2016, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor.
And Steve.
Steve Freyvert, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, just want to say a few words on their behalf. They work very hard at what they do, and I'm proud of their achievements. I think I'll be here at next Monday's work session to give you a brief update as to what our activities are. And I'll leave you with the thought that it's not good because it's old, it's old because it's good.
Thank you.
Are you referring to anyone in particular? Thank you, Steve. The next item is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be acted by -- enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. The Consent Agenda this evening, there are finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette licenses, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. A resolution approving 2016 Cascade Bridge lighting modifications. Resolution authorizing consolation of contract number 7042, an agreement between Burlington Urban Service and Hope Haven Incorporated for the leasing of vehicles as part of both systems' public transportation system. Resolution authorizing discharging of weapons at 1110 Agency Street for service purposes. Resolution approving proposal for Automatic Systems Company of Ames, Iowa for a dissolved air flotation, DAF automation project. Resolution of support, financial commitment for the Main Street program in the city of Burlington, Iowa. We're setting a date of public hearings on May 16th for four items. Consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 Cascade watershed sewer separation project, Phase 2. Consideration of a budget amendment, Number 1, for fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Summer Street right-of-way located east of the property at 215 Summer Street, Burlington, Iowa. Consideration of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way located west of the property at 1412 Hillary Avenue. Two appointments, reappointing Judy Stevens to the Historic Preservation Commission and James Seberg to the Low-Rent Housing Agency. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to have any of these items removed for consideration from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, council, do you have any?
I'd like to remove Number 5, Your Honor.
Resolution of support for financial commitment in the Main Street program. Okay, are those items removed for future discussion? Any others? Councilwoman Wilson. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
You need a second. Have a motion, a second, to approve the Consent Agenda. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. We will consider Item Number 5 after the regular agenda. Now, we're here for a consideration of a general obligation parking lot improvement loan agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $70,000. And is this Travis, or are you going to talk?
Well, I can talk briefly about this for the public hearing purposes. This is a general corporate purpose issue for a parking lot, so it's treated differently from the essential corporate purpose. We'd had, when we were doing the -- going through this process earlier, we did authorize, council had authorization for street improvements and the ambulance purchases per the CIP with bond financing. This was another project that was bond financed, but it was neglected in the process. This is getting it taken care of before we go and do a full issuance of bonds for items that were in our capital improvement plan that were anticipated to be done with bond financing. The overall amount for bond financing is $1,265,000?
Ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-five thousand. This funding, what's -- it's listed here not to exceed 70,000. We're anticipating at -- now, I hate not having the numbers in front of me. It's about $62,000, $63,000 it was in the CIP. When we were doing this, the intent was for the Washington and Sixth Street parking lot. As we've gone through projects and gotten bids back on some of the work that we are already doing at the ramp down Washington and Main Street, that's going to be over what we'd originally allocated for that, so we'll move some of the funds that we have set aside here down to do that project. As we are looking at the costs that we're going to be associated with the parking lot improvements at Washington and Sixth, they're not anticipating some of the storm sewer work. Think that's correct? To be as high as what was previously anticipated. So, we do have the flexibility to move some of the funding around. Regardless, it's for parking lot improvements.
Okay. And anyone from the audience have a comment or a question? Is this the point where Travis is going to give us a presentation?
Actually, this would be appropriate during the hearing. It's for the bonds itself is the immediate item right after this. His comments are going to be more for the bonds in general. This is for the -- hearing is for the 70,000.
We'll hold off then, okay? Any questions from the audience? Council? Need any clarification? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
I have a motion to close, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
What are we doing?
Right through this.
The resolution that follows that is the next action item.
I have a resolution authorizing approving a bond purchase agreement for general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2016A, and general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016B, and authorizing early redemption of outstanding bonds.
I'll second that. Okay, now Travis is on.
Jim, why isn't this part of the public hearing?
This is a -- there's a -- The public hearing has -- the public hearing was specifically for the authority to let the public know of the intent to look at borrowing for the -- for a general corporate purpose issue, the parking lot. This is separate from the public hearing. It's, I mean, you had to have the public hearing held before you can borrow for those funds. But the 2016A issue is -- covers both general corporate purpose, which is the parking lot, and essential corporate purpose, the streets and the ambulance. So, it's a larger issue. This resolution incorporates the financing of more issues than what we're involved specifically just in the public hearing. I mean, the information is, I mean, the information is relevant to the public hearing, but it's not part of the public hearing itself. The public hearing was not for this overall bond issue. It was specifically for the general corporate purpose issue of the parking lot. Now, this is a direct result of that, and the comments that would have come out of any concerns that may have been raised either from the general public or anything that you may have heard from the general public about the idea of bonding for it, or your own particular concerns. Now, as you go to do the borrowing itself in this resolution, if you have any concerns and you think that that needs to be stripped out, you could certainly strip it out.
Yep. And just so you're aware, the authority has already been held back in March for the amount that's being considered. Part of the authority there, there was approximately 70,000 that was originally just included in your essential corporate purpose. So, this further breaks out the purpose of a parking lot as a general corporate purpose. So, if you were to not move forward with the parking lot, for example, you could still utilize the bond funds towards streets based on the prior hearing.
He has the right answer.
He knows this better than I do. We do it.
I thought I understood what you were asking there, so, very good.
Thank you.
Travis Squires at Piper Jaffray. You have a resolution prepared by your bond attorney tonight for the consideration of a bond purchase agreement. Before we get into that, I just wanted to take you real quick through the financing information. But before we hit that, the city did go through the bond rating process again, had your A-plus rating with Standard and Coors affirmed. You know, highlights there, I guess I would say they're happy to see you continue to work towards your progress. You know, as you're reaching your goals and eliminating those deficit accounts that were on your books, you know, I think you're going to continue to see what I'd call kind of some upward rating pressure. So, as you continue to execute your plan, I think you're well positioned to be able to access the market as needed for bond financing at some of the lowest rates available. So, very good call. We did have one minor correction that we had to kind of throw last minute as we were reviewing their report, but we did get that straightened out before the rating went public. So, you know, overall, it's a nice report. I do have copies of it that I can kind of hand out afterwards. You know, one thing I'd note, you know, they do note they state weak economy, but I think that's just overall their kind of view of the southeast Iowa region as far as buying and purchasing power. So, we have had that comments on basically all rating reports in this area, you know, despite what I think you guys would say. Overall, you guys see some strengthening in your economy. So, for the rating agency, it's more just a comparison to other metrics of other A-plus rated communities around the country. So, it says nothing about your local community. So, I just want to, you know, as you read through that, don't throw up the, I guess I would say, the antenna or radar like I typically do. What do you mean, what do you mean it's weak? You know, it's, I wouldn't view that as weak, but within your rating sector where you've now pushed up to that A-plus level, you know, you're comparing yourself against pretty high-level credits around the country, so.
Yeah, we emailed that out last week to the council for you to see, and the things that were highlighted in there, that it seems like we don't have control necessarily over our local economy outside of taking positive actions to try to do our best to attract companies here. We do, one of the things that they noted for what we need to still work on is eliminating our, essentially eliminating our deficits, getting our cash balance up higher so we have a little, a higher liquidity than what we currently do. And I know I had one other thing that I was going to mention out of that, but, well, with the 15 percent, within our policies, they noted that we have the 15 percent cash balance requirement. It does not specifically note that we had given ourselves within that financial, set of financial policies that we approved. That was something that we were, have a goal to achieve over a period of years. And we are on task for hitting the timeframe that we did, that we did set for getting to that 15 percent. So, if you, as you read the report, it may sound as if we're missing a target there. Well, we are, but we're right on target with what, the path that we said that we would be working towards on that.
Yep. Other than that, you know, you see the one headline that says we, everything else is strong throughout. You know, strong management, budgetary performance, budgetary flexibility, liquidity, all of those things that were not strong five years ago. City's in much better position. So, that's just a sidebar. You know, I don't get a chance to talk through a lot of rating reports, but you guys have done an excellent job with that. Before you then, I have a packet of information to talk about what were two financings upon approval tonight, that would be final interest rates for the city. One is funding your capital improvement plan. If you recall, one of the things on your capital improvement plan that we've talked about for years is avoiding backloading debt, getting the city into a levy rate structure that allows you to do level principal or declining principal. And the city is still in the works of kind of getting there. I kind of remind you, we do have about three, four more years to work through where the city kind of has a plateau on their levy rate. But we don't anticipate any additional debt service levy increases based on your capital improvement plan. And then, once we get through that five-year period, depending on the amount of projects you're moving forward with, that levy rate could even see a little bit of a decline going forward in the future. So, ultimately, a lot of, a lot of good things there. You guys are now under what I'd say that your kind of debt limit targets. You, at least briefly, are going to be under 60 percent of the city's constitutional debt limit, which you guys have not been at. It's been five or six years, if not more. I think since you did the 2011 bond issue, you guys have not been below that 60 percent level. So, the city's at, kind of as a percentage of your overall valuations, the lowest debt level that you've been at as far as property tax back debt. You know, obviously, you still have the sewer projects coming along, but, you know, overall, very, very positive news on that front. So, anyway, I'm going to take you guys through a real quick packet. I have a savings analysis that is updated from the figures from a week ago. One thing you'll see there, your savings number is about the same. If you go to that third page of that packet, it shows your existing bond payments versus your new bond payments. Total savings rate at $117,000 over the next six fiscal years. As a reminder, about 25 percent of that bond issue is paid from tax increment financing revenues, so about a quarter of that savings will flow through there. The rest of that is then property tax relief in the form of a lower debt service levy. Your, the page after that does have an illustration of the two bond issues. You can see Series A, which we're calling your new money. That's your capital improvement plan, approximately $1.3 million issue to fund your capital improvements for the upcoming year. You can see payments, $45,000 of principal in '17, nothing in '18, and then pretty much a level there throughout the rest of the schedule. It's kind of been the target schedule that we've been looking at. And one thing we've also talked about is keeping that within 15 years. So, you see that the final payment on that issue is only 13 years out as opposed to a level debt service 15. So, where we had to kind of delay principal for a year or two and put the last year a little bit higher, the goal was to keep it so that it was no worse than having a level 15-year schedule or the equivalent of that. Your Series B then is the refunding. Then you see your total payments. Interest rates off to the right side. Those represent what I'd call kind of the face value rate or the rate that investors will get paid, but doesn't necessarily represent the underlying yields and overall rates. So, you see 2 percent on Series A, pretty much across the board, except for the last two maturities are at 2.25. And then on the Series B, they're at 2, 2, and then 3 for the remaining four years. Now, as far as average rates are concerned, on Series A, your average interest rate is at 1.8 percent. On Series B, it is at 1.22 percent. So, those are the average rates. What is going to happen is that as the purchaser of the bonds, we're going to pay you more than the face value of the rate. So, where the amount is $1,295 on Series A, Piper Jaffray is paying a premium of $26,000 on that. On Series B, where that part, principal amount is $2,180, we're actually paying you a premium of $132,000 on that bond issue. So, overall, that's all taken into account. As far as how do these numbers change from what you saw a week ago? One, we've kind of zeroed in on fees. Your fees are approximately $15,000 lower than anticipated. So, part of that was us taking a look at where the savings was, what we had shown you and saying, well, we can do a little bit better. We can tighten up our fee here. You know, Jim, Jim doesn't call and bother me too much, so it's, you know, it's usually a cordial conversation if that. We talk about running and football and our kids. So, you know, overall, you guys have, you know, been reasonably fair with our time commitment, so we pass that savings on to you guys in terms of a lower fee. Your existing bonds on the prior page, so just a little bit on your refinancing, and this is kind of the bullet points of what do I need to know about the refinancing? I'm taking my interest rate from 4 percent down to about 1.2 percent, and that's where you're coming up with $117,000 in savings. So, if I'm throwing the high-level overview, what do you need to know about that? You know, those are probably the bullet points. It meets your minimum threshold savings within your policy targets, so therefore was the reason that this was pursued.
And it does not extend the life of the bond?
It does not extend the life of the bonds, no. And as far as your new money issue, you're borrowing for your current capital improvements at about 1.8 percent on an average rate. If you factor in the financing fees, the average rate or true interest cost is 1.92 on that portion. Overall, between the two Series, you're borrowing through the refinancing and the new money at 1.7 percent. So, those rates are very good. You guys spent a nice, nice time in the market here. As far as some of the details within this packet, you see that there's a page with the existing bonds that are the target of the refinancing, and then you have the original issue discount and premium. Those are just some details about, you know, well, how do we come up with an average rate of 1.2 when the rates say 2 percent, 2 percent, 3 percent throughout? Well, this shows you the calculation of how you get there and how we're paying you that $132,000 premium. And my intention is not to bore you and make this take, you know, hours for your meeting because I think we're over the high-level point. What do we really need to know? But these are some of the details, and if you do have further questions, certainly be happy to clarify. The final page in the packet then before the disclosures really just gives you that overall look at funding your CIP program for this upcoming year. The columns I would want you to focus on on this page have to do with columns 11 and 12. You see existing net DS or debt service levy. So, this represents your overall property tax levy on your debt service amount. So, you can see as that amount in columns 10 and 11, you see it for the first couple of years, it's only going to decline a little bit, but then after you get out four or five years, your debt service burden certainly does slow down a little bit. So, you get some of that debt that had been issued over the last 10 years paid off, depending on the level at which you're going after new capital projects. You see that no-growth levy slowly declining over time, or you could say rapidly declining once you get past that plateau in 2022. Now, obviously, there's some things on your five-year capital improvement plan that will keep that higher. I mean, you're not going to go down from a $3.80 debt service levy to a dollar debt service levy in the next seven or eight years. But certainly, you might have some room to move off of that 3.80 level depending on where your overall situation ends up. But the good news about that is, once you get to 21, that's also kind of the end of the initiative of setting aside a significant portion of revenues to eliminate the deficit. So, it's all going to kind of roll off at the same time, and the city's going to have a lot more financial flexibility, part of the vision of the council when they set forth five or six years ago.
Thank you.
That's probably more than Jim wanted. He said, keep it short, so, you know. That's kind of the overall summary. If you guys have any questions on this. Your action item tonight then is just the resolution from Dorsey and Whitney, prepared by your bond attorney to authorize the bond purchase agreements. Upon authorizing that, Mayor's, Mayor Pro Tem in this case, is authorized to sign the bond purchase agreements. So, any questions from the council, administration, any of the council?
Is there another agenda item like this next time around?
Yeah, you'll have a, what we'd call the bond issuance, so the issuance resolution. That will come then at your next regular meeting.
And you're not planning on being here, so what does that accomplish? Or were you planning on being here?
All that does is really, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's on the financing. So, tonight really locks in the interest rates, in the, kind of the timing of it. You know, if we were to want bond counsel to do all the documents at one meeting, we really would have had to do the pricing last week, last Thursday, have them final numbers at an earlier time so that they can get all of the documents. Because the documents are a little bit more involved, they want to double-check all the numbers. So, this allows you to kind of move forward with, well, we typically say best execution is going to set rates on the same day that you're approving. Typically allows investors to be a little bit more aggressive, especially in kind of the wake of what the Fed might or might not do every week or what new report might come out in the economy. So, that's, that's one of the reasons we kind of set it up so it's this way. There have been times in the past when Dorsey and Whitney has agreed to do them on the same day. Those are typically not during the months of April and May when they're kind of in their busy season, so, good question.
And the question, the statement you made about our bond usage of debt capacity?
Yep.
The last time we were below 60 percent was 2003. Our outstanding debt, that's back GO bond debt, at ending this year, just shy of $34 million? just shy of thirty-four million, uh, will be the lowest since two thousand seven. So, now, that's not gonna be the same next year as we bring on the flood wall project. We're gonna be issuing a, a significant amount of debt. And if we end up doing that, uh, and keep it GO backed, which is, it's not the only option that's out there, but that'll, that'll take us up. It'll still keep us below seventy percent of debt usage though.
Yeah, and, and on this last page, there is a little chart at the bottom that says you're remaining within the various debt limit constraints. So right now, you're about seven point nine million under that seventy percent constraint.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Travis.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone from the audience have a question or a comment? Counsel, anything else? Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, authorize and approve. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Wonderful. Motion carries. Next.
I have a resolution supporting IDOT submittal for FTA's Buses and Bus Facilities Competitive Grant Program and approval of mayor's signature for letter of support.
Second that. Mr. Humbert?
Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. Um, wasn't able to get this on ahead of time like typical. I just received something, I think, last Tuesday of the state's intentions to apply for this grant. It's, uh, uh, put on by the Iowa Department of Transportation, Office of, of Transportation or Transit Planning. Overall, it's a two-hundred-and-eleven million dollar nationwide grant. The max that anybody can receive on it, one aspect of it is ten percent. So this aspect of it, the state's looking to apply for roughly twenty-one million or ten percent of that. Uh, the aspect we're participating in is rural and urban systems. So that means people like us and C bus. They've requested that we, uh, uh, give them a letter of support, so, which is, uh, one of the aspects, and the other is just a resolution supporting this. So you may ask, what does this mean? If the state would get the, uh, uh, full twenty-one million, we'd be able to replace, according to, they do it on their, on their point system. And, uh, if they get the twenty-one million, we'd be able to support all three buses. Now, uh, our buses that we have available, our oldest bus is seven-twenty-one, and it, uh, it is actually twenty-second on the list. And if the state got a little over two point two million dollars, that one would be funded. Uh, our next bus is seven-twenty-two. It's ninety-first on the list, and we'd have to have about seven point two million dollars. And again, our third bus on the list is our, uh, seven-twenty-three B bus. And there, we're gonna have to have twenty point nine. It's listed at, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-ninth on the list of buses they're looking to potentially replace on this. So, uh, again, it, uh, I think the mayor has signed, uh, Kathleen, the letter ahead of time, so you would be approving his signature. I think, uh, the resolution's under yours, Mayor Pro Tem. So, again, it's a, I would do recommend, uh, that you approve both of these items.
And this is an item separate from the previous application?
The consolidate application, yes. This is just another opportunity to try to get money for buses.
This is a separate pot of money. It's under the Clean Air Atainment Act?
I believe this one is, yes.
And this, does that mean that this is for, is this just for regular bus? Or has this become an electric bus? Or what happens?
Well, the way they're, way from what I read on the way they're replying for this, this is just bus and bus facilities in general. There was another program that had to do with clean air attainment. I, I read it. It was the same pot of mu- same amount of money. And at that time, I'd had some discussions with the city manager of looking to, uh, put in for possibly two propane buses, propane facilities, and convert our fleet garage to try to get propane as we, as we kind of move into that. Previously, this came out probably six, eight months ago, and it was for non-attainment, uh, non-attainment areas, the one that we're talking about before. And we were, we didn't qualify. They opened it up to basically everybody this last time. So.
And the fifteen percent match?
The fifteen percent match is the same. City match, eighty-five percent of it comes from the grant. So that's how they're getting up to that twenty, twenty-one million.
Can we afford fifteen percent on three buses?
We budgeted for, I think, two in the budget.
Sounds like that's.
But if, anything that we can, can get, if we can get eighty-five percent funding, within the state funding application, you submitted your request, you requesting to make authority at least for five buses to be replaced. If we were to be, have five there and three here, we'd be ecstatic. The chances of that are pretty much nil. Uh, in fact, you're, I think you're probably likely, if, if they were to receive funding under this, that you would get two of these and still not get any out of the state funding this cycle. But.
Cause we're, we're still way behind. But the one nice thing, that if, if we were successful in this, that will open up other buses down the road to, to move up the list a little quicker.
Sure.
Anyone from the audience have a question or comment? Seeing none. Counsel? No questions or comments. Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
And so the motion is approved. And now we have one last agenda.
I have a resolution to support financial commitment for Main Street program, city of Burlington, Iowa.
And a second that?
I brought this, uh, brought this up, um, or asked to have this pulled off the agenda. I'm not necessarily opposed to the Main Street program. There's aspects of it that I don't like. But the, uh, signing the agreement and, uh, making the, uh, uh, financial, uh, commitment, it happened to do it on, happened to sign papers and, and, uh, not, not as a, I, 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 this would be more tasteful if it was a resolution, uh, you know, accepting the Main Street program as our program for the city of Burlington, Iowa, rather than having to sign a contract with them. It's, it, it, it puts the same taste in my mouth as the consent order that we had to sign with the, uh, uh, DNR for doing our sewer separation. We were years into that program when they brought that consent order, uh, before us and, and forced this, uh, our hand in, uh, in signing that. I would say at that time, I was the only council member to, to vote against that, uh, action. I just, I, I find that when you get organizations like this, they start to get power, and they gain more and more power well beyond what the intent was. Um, you know, this was a, a program to i- improve, uh, the downtowns and, and communities like ours. And, uh, it's almost like they're, uh, uh, like they're, they're taking over. And, uh, I know this, uh, contract isn't much different than ones that were signed before, but, um, it's still distasteful no matter how you look at it. And, uh, that's why I brought it up. Uh, I, I don't intend to, uh, to vote against it. I mean, this is the, the way the program works, but I do want to express that I, I, I find it appalling that, uh, they think that they've got to have a city sign a contract with them to, uh, and, and make a, uh, a commitment like this. It's almost embarrassing.
Sure.
Leave it at that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you brought it up then. Steve, could I ask you to come in? What exactly do we get from the Main Street program that makes this worthwhile?
Steve, favorite executive director of Downtown Partners. And as, as you might know, uh, April, last month, was our thirtieth anniversary in the Main Street program. We're one of the first five original towns to, to take part in, in the Main Street Iowa program. What do we get? Um, we get professional assistance. And in fact, we have our, uh, our annual program visit coming up this, this Wednesday. Uh, so they do a kind of annual check-in with us on, on some of our needs and some of our wants and some of the things that we ask about. Professional training for myself and, and for volunteers or other staff people who wanna go to any of the workshops, any of the Main Street conferences, the Iowa Downtown Summit in August. Uh, we are eligible for the Main Street Challenge Grants when those are available, which more often than not they are. Uh, so that's, uh, venues for things like, uh, the five-hundred Jefferson Building, uh, Preservation Station, the Des Moines County, uh, Historical Society's Heritage Center. And it also puts us kind of in touch with, with a lot of the, the programs that, um, that not, that would kind of fall through the cracks if we didn't have somebody coordinating it all. And I think of things like, uh, when the Capitol Theater and the bookend buildings received I jobs grants. Those were directly because, uh, Main Street Iowa knew that we as a Main Street program were interested in those buildings. So we're seeing, um, investment in our downtown. We're seeing, uh, businesses move in, uh, residences move in. Uh, the value of downtown for the city and for the taxpayer, I think, is increasing, uh, enormously. Uh, and we are having a great year this year, and I'm, I'm hoping to see it continue.
Thank you, Steve.
Happy to answer further questions.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Counsel, anything further?
No, I just mentioned that the, the kind of things that, that are in here is like the, the local Main Street program agrees, uh, to, uh, maintain an office and designate a boundary as a local Main Street district. Maintain workman's compens- workers' compensation on the executive director. Why does something like that need to be in a contract form, sign with them, and then, and then, uh, the threat that if we don't do this, that it, it will, uh, they will take us off the list and, uh, uh, it'll result in the termination of this agreement, loss of recognition as a Main Street program community? I just, I don't, I don't work well under threats. I'm a, I'm a businessman. I work with a handshake and a, and a kiss sometimes or a hug anyway. And, uh, this, this kind of stuff's nonsense, and it's not, it's not necessary. It's, I mean, submit a signed program agreement with a copy of the city's resolution to support, a copy of local, uh, Main Street program, Board of Directors Resolution to Support in one completed W-nine form. That's the form that you have to provide to the, or that you have to have on file or provide to, uh, companies that you do business with to show that, that you are a, a business within the, I, I, I mean, it's just, this is just ridiculous. I'm making more out of, out of it than what it, than what it is, but it's, it's still distasteful.
Yep, I understand. Counsel, one listen?
I have nothing to add.
You ready to go? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you for your comments. Duly noted. Thank you, Steve. This is the time for comments from the audience. Anyone having any comments about anything we've not discussed previously? Seeing none. From the council. Counsel, one listen?
Um, over the weekend, I was able to participate in the sip taste and stroll. It happens twice a year. Uh, it's a really fun, funny event. I encourage everyone to take advantage of it in September on the second, on the second time this year that it happens. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
There was a lot of activity downtown this weekend. It's, they had that, uh, cutting deal going on where they go from. Different fundraisers going on, and there was a, there was just a lot of traffic downtown. It was hard to find a place to park.
That's good.
That's, that's, that's not a bad thing when you, you got people coming in and out of businesses downtown.
Exactly.
Like that. So it's, you know, Friday night and Saturday, and, uh, we're two very busy days for downtown. So.
Good. Is that it? We are starting Wednesday's garbage route for the cleanup on Wednesday, or Thursday, which is a?
Wednesday.
Wednesday starts the Wednesday route. Okay. That's all I have to say. Mr. Verno?
You keep up with that better than I do. Small biz, the Chambers hold, hold, holding their breakfast, breakfast for the small business appreciation on Friday, May thirteen. Uh, if anyone was wanting to attend, uh, on behalf of the city, please let us know, and we can make sure we get a spot reserved and make sure that they've got a good, accurate count.
I'll be there.
Okay. We have been involved in, uh, interviews for the Assistant City Manager for Public Works. That's a process that's just ongoing. Uh, we're ho- hoping that we'll be able to, uh, get someone in that position fairly soon. Uh, one of the things that Stephanie mentioned coming back from your personnel training was average, average time to fill a department head level position, six months. Uh, we would like to break that on this, but, uh, it's, you, you don't have to look far to see that in action. I've talked with our staff. The city of Muscatine has been trying to fill a, a public works director position since, well, though, they did their first hiring, I think, closed for positions in December, and they are still in the process of trying to find someone to fill that. Uh, so it can take, it can take some time. We're, we're hopeful to be under that average, though, well under that average. Flood Steering Committee, uh, met to kind of go over what had come out of the public input session, uh, last week. My understanding of how that timing is, uh, it's gonna, the thoughts are gonna go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eric, is that next week?
I think it might be.
Is that when your meeting is? Next Tu- next Tuesday?
Tuesday or Wednesday. I know how to move it.
Okay. So anyway, next week, the Planning and Zoning will be meeting to, to be, to have the thoughts go to them and what the proposal is. And that, then that's anticipated, we're gonna be looking at, uh, a June meeting. I think the first June work session is when they're planning on coming and talking and asking for a tentative approval from the council, um, on what their tenant, their current plan is at that point. KBUR, I guess I get to be on with nine o'clock. I might even actually come at the correct time this time. Council Goal Setting is listed in June. Uh, you've gotten information on that. There's a survey to fill out, uh, with some due dates on that. So encourage you to get that taken care of. And, um, if you need any materials to review from the last time, let us know, and we can get that to you. You might have had that included in your packet, too. I can't remember. Steps, or things that we're still trying to get done, uh, we've had two closings that have, uh, just taken forever. Uh, one on the Manor site that we are hoping to do a closing the end of this week. We are hope, they had wanted to get the closing done the end of last week, but just getting the details worked out on that, uh, we ran out of time. So, uh, we're hopeful that this Thursday or Friday, we'll be able to get the, everything signed. Um, US Bank Building, we're also, we tentatively had for this Wednesday to sign, uh, papers. With the mayor being absent, uh, we had to delay that till Friday. Um, one of the things that we'd had going on, we mentioned that we were doing the asbestos testing. So we had a phase one environmental that was being done, and that, they, out of the phase one environmental that was done and funded from the state, uh, that report has gone to, from Klingner to the state. I got an excerpt of a couple of pages, and I got a copy of that to you, uh, to look at. It just highlights some potential issues out there that, uh, it's part of a process that when they do the phase one environmental, they look at whether some potential things that need to be thought of. That report looks at potential environmental conditions that are at that location. They mentioned that their, their records show that there was a dry cleaning facility on that site between nineteen forty-five and fifty-eight, uh, that would mean that there's potential can, there's, anytime you have a dry cleaner, there's a potential that there's been contamination on site. Um, they noted that Riley Brothers had a location there that might have been just a retail location, but just, they're just pointing out that that is a potential issue. Uh, they mentioned, uh, the coal gas plant that was a couple of blocks from that target property that there could have been leaching into the, this location. They also mentioned similar things with, uh, the Carpenter Station site and the former Churchill Drug Site, uh, are in that vicinity and could potentially have an impact here. Now, to do, for, with that in mind, their recommendation is that we do a phase two environmental. Phase two environmental to do that process is gonna take a few more months to go through. That would stop this closing from occurring. Uh, we're, be beyond the due diligence period. Now, that if you have a concern and want to stop this process, uh, we need, we need to know. And I guess I'll just give you the thought, uh, if any of you individually have a concern about this that wants to put a delay. And I guess I'll just give you the thought, uh, if any of you individually have a concern about this that wants to put a delay on it, we need to know this week, otherwise we would have closing go on as scheduled at the end of this week. None of these are known problems, or known that, that there's actually something there, there are potentials. And there, some of them would have, and if they are, if there's issues there, there's potential that, and the public right of ways that we have already have issues, so, um, you just have to, to know that you may be bringing on an additional cleanup cost, we just don't know. All that being said, this is still the preferred site for the location. If the, if there are cleanup costs that are associated with this, if they do happen as we move forward, that's just, I mean, they, there are things that we can take care of, they may, they'd be above and beyond what we'd already looked at for costs. We can come up with a way to, to address them as we move forward. Again, if you think it's a showstopper, or, or something that you want to s- slow down the process, we'd have to find out if US Bank was willing to slow down the process on this, but it will delay any move if you do do something like that. If any of you individually, again, have an issue with this, uh, we can delay until at least next week, so we can have it go through a council work session to have a discussion next week too. So just think about that, I'm sure you'll hear input as this is out now in the public to talk about, but we, we don't, again, we don't know there's an issue, it's just these are things are being pointed out, that there are risks. Any size of relief about how easy this kind of process is, because it doesn't give me any size of relief, but, again, I know our police department is very excited about moving forward, we're on schedule, absent this stuff, uh, being able to have them begin construction yet this summer and to fall, uh, and hopefully be out of the building next May, June is their timeframe, allowing us to be able to start with the rehab of that facility. So, and that, that is really, uh, the end of what I had for tonight. That's, those are big concerns, but, uh, to some extent, part of just the process of having property or dealing with property.
Chief, is that the positive note that usually end your meetings on? Yeah. Okay.
I, you just got to know, there are risks, there are always risks out there, and if you think this is too big a risk, we can stop, but there's not, never going to be a perfect and
Yeah.
solution that doesn't have potential things come up. I, I don't really have a whole lot more I can say about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You ready? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second to adjourn, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
We're adjourned, God bless you and God bless.